It is Friday night, July 10th at 5:05 PM. And I, we are having a committee of the whole tonight. And I want to address our proposed city ordinance for covering face coverings in public. Many thanks are in order. We've gotten guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, Governor White and Mike Dewine over the last few months. More recently and more locally, we saw a spike in the number of cases in the county. Our mayor, Steve Patterson, has led the way on the concern regarding the spread of the virus and what we might do, referencing the Dayton, then Columbus, and Cincinnati ordinances to require face coverings. Councilmember Crowell shared the Dayton ordinance, and I know that all council members have responded to numerous public queries. Out of the conversations, even a new project is set off with councilmembers Smedley and government channel staff member Ryan Schwartzoff working on media, a media project about why we wear masks. As we looked at the Dayton ordinance, several people assisted and adapted an ordinance for our Athens conditions. Councilmember Grace added valuable information on state and county data and adapted, as well as text to the draft document. Acting Service Safety Director Tom Pyle, Law Director Elias, and Mayor Patterson and his executive assistant Patty Whitmer, and our Clerk of Council Debbie Walker have contributed hours of their time this week to move this forward in a timely fashion, with our government channel directors Scott Thompson and staff member Ryan Schwartzoff making all this possible. We have a City-County Health Department letter of support, thanks to Dr. Gaskill and his staff. Last, but certainly not least, we thank the many citizens of the city and county who have provided valuable comments as they shared their concerns. The draft document we have for review tonight requires face coverings over the nose and mouth in certain settings, and is complaint-driven. The Athens Police Department is empowered to enforce this and issue a $100 administrative fine with an appeals process if a person wishes to appeal a citation. There are four places where we would be required to wear a face covering: when entering and exiting or waiting in line to enter a place of business that's open to the public, and while inside the business in areas intended for public use; any city building; any public transportation, like the buses and if bus stops; any outdoor space if you cannot maintain a six-foot distance. There are also 12 exceptions: a medical condition or developmental disability; children under the age of 10; if you're eating or drinking at a restaurant or bar; schools and childcare centers are also exceptions; places where it's not practical while being treated at a doctor or a dentist; or swimming; walking or exercising outside; exercising at a gym; in an individual workspace; inside a personal or commercial vehicle; or while acting as a public safety employee or emergency responder; or if complying with the directions of those public safety employees. For our discussion tonight, we'll follow our usual procedures. We'll have comments from councilmembers, leading with Councilmember Grace, comments from our mayor and other elected officials, and following this with any members of the public who may wish to make a comment or direct a question. And we will have a three-minute limit for the comments. So, thank you very much. We'll start with Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. I appreciate that introduction, and that really covers the critical and pertinent portions of our draft ordinance. Over the past two weeks, it has become very clear that we're seeing some dramatic changes in our community. And I just want to highlight some of those numbers for everyone. In Athens, two weeks ago today, we had a total, and this is Athens County, not only Athens City, Athens County, that's important to remember, we had a total of 29 cases. And today, we're at nearly four times that. We've quadrupled our number of cases, nearly quadrupled our number of cases, in two weeks, and today's numbers are 111. Even more concerning is the number of active cases. And this has gone in two weeks. It's more than a 12-fold increase. Two weeks ago, there were only six active cases, and today we have 76. These really, really stood out to me as critical reasons for actively doing something, actively speaking to our community, and highlighting that this is really something we all, all need to do together. In the past couple of days, I know I have seen statements from many beloved local businesses. They are closing, some due to staff members who have tested positive, and some due to an abundance of caution just because of the rise in cases in our, in our region. And I, I love our community and our local businesses, and the evidence is absolutely indisputable. Wearing face mask in public reduces the spread of this disease. And I say that from reading countless research studies, and I say that as someone with a master's in public health. This is, this is not a fact that is debated. We know that the, that wearing a face covering helps. It will save lives. And if we want, if we want to move forward as a community, someone, use the language with me that, you know, this, a hashtag of #SaveFallSemester. We, we here in Athens love the vibrancy of a bustling student community, and, and we understand the value of in-person interactions in, in all levels of school. And we, then, we have a responsibility to do everything we can to slow the spread of this disease, to protect everyone, especially the most vulnerable, and to, to make it possible for our schools and our businesses to reopen as quickly as possible. But those are, those are my reasons. I, I think, I think it is, it is time, and, and I so appreciate all the work, our, our law director and mayor and president of council and clerk of council. I, I know all of us spent a lot of hours working on this in, in a short time, and I, I really appreciate the, the willingness to, of everyone to come together during our, our recess and discuss this and bring it forward. And, yes, I, I just saw a message from President Isley pop up, I think, but I'll, I'll address that again. Like, schools, all school settings are excluded, because we do not have the authority to put rules in place in school buildings, in, for school districts. They have their own governing body, and, and we are therefore entirely excluding those settings from this ordinance. But what we do everywhere else, what we do at the gym, at Kroger, at a restaurant, even, even standing in line for takeout, will influence what those educational facilities are able to do. And so, I, I think it's really important to recognize how interconnected our entire community is. And thank you all for being here.
Thank you. And is there, yes, Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. Sarah and I have talked back and forth about this a bit. I also want to emphasize that this is exactly why Ohio is a home rule state. This is our responsibility with the oath of office that we all spoke, which we all are hewing to when we protect the health and safety and welfare of our, of our citizens. And, and this is exactly why, because we know our, our community much better, and if we are saying we need to have universal, you know, face coverings in the most places that we can logically have it be in, then that's our, our oath of office and our right as home rule people in Athens, Ohio. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Claude Felter?
I think, I agree with Members Grace and Fall, and with most of the nation, that this is absolutely a critical public health issue, and that having everybody in town wearing face masks could save lives and save people from getting bankrupted if they get, have to go to the hospital and get intubated or something. So, it is critically a, a public health issue, and that is my first priority. But, here in Athens, I think that it is also a really important economic issue. If we can flatten the curve, because right now, if you look at our trend line, the curve is just soaring. It's going way up because of the data that Member Grace shared. At, I can see that more people have joined since she was speaking, so two weeks ago, we had 29 cases, and as of today, we have 111. That is going in, in a really bad direction way too fast. And that is critical for public health reasons. I won't go into that again, because my colleagues have explained it well, but I would argue that it's critical for our local economy, too. If, as, as Member Grace mentioned, some of our local businesses, and the mayor mentioned, some of our local businesses have chosen to close already, because one or more of their employees has gotten a confirmed case of coronavirus, others are worried that people are going to come in and make them sick. And even though not everybody likes to think about this, not only is our number-one employer in town, Ohio University, but those students really enhance our, our local economy. And if we can't flatten the curve, I'm really afraid that the parents of some of the OU students won't let their kids come here this fall. If the numbers keep shooting up, it could seem like too dangerous of a place for them to come. And so, we as a community have to pull together to wear these masks and flatten the curve, so that, you know, we can still, still remain a good, economically beneficial town, and, and we won't get further devastated if thousands of students don't come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smedley?
Thank you, President Isley, and thanks to everyone for taking the time, putting all this effort in to get this together so quickly. I know it wasn't easy. And I wanted to stress what was already mentioned by Member Grace, how important it is that this go into place to help our most vulnerable. So many can have this and be just fine, but there are a large population of people who, who get this, it could mean a death sentence. So, we are wearing this for ourselves, and we are wearing these for others. And we have to remember that. It's not just about us. So, thank you, everybody, for, for doing this, and thank you for hoping to save lives.
Okay. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you. Madam President, Member Grace and others, I really do appreciate all the hard work at one end of putting this document together and getting it out here so quickly. First of all, I just want to say, I, I agree 100% for the need and the necessity, and I, I want this thing passed as absolutely soon as possible. I mean, the count's going up, and I know there are people out there who will object to it, and there's those out there who will object to the data. They don't like what they see, so they will fall into denial or find some way to cuckoo it, but unfortunately, for them, the facts speak for themselves that we are in a crisis. What I want to speak to, though, is the section on exemptions, if anyone's following their printouts. In section 2, paragraph J, "Individuals while acting in their official capacity as public safety employee or emergency responders, when wearing a mask covering would interfere with or limit their ability to carry out their official duties or functions." I want, what I'm wondering is, how does the, that employee in a situation decide for themselves, "I need to take the mask off"? And the reason I'm asking that is because, you know, we recently had a, the demonstration uptown, and we had police officers walking around with no masks on, even though there were large crowds there, and many people were wearing masks, they weren't. I've heard an explanation about why that was, but what I, I fear is that if there are not clear guidelines about when and where and how to wear a mask for public employees, including ourselves, that's not setting a very good example for the public. So, I would really like to see somehow this stiffened up a little bit, through policy, not necessarily within the ordinance, but maybe within the personnel policy itself. Some guidelines that say, "This is when you can wear it, and this is when you can't", and just because it's uncomfortable, that's not a reason to take it off. That's why, excuse me, wanted to say. Thank you.
You're muted, President Isley.
Thank you. And I see hands raised for Councilmembers Grace and Claude Felter, but if you're going to answer the question or respond to that, fine, but I also want to allow a chance for Councilmembers Crowell and Kotzis to respond. Just general comments. Councilmember Kotzis?
Yes, President Isley, thank you. And, so, you folks can hear me this time?
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay. I'm in 100% of this. I think that looking, you know, even if this keeps one person off, off a respirator, this is, this is definitely worth it. It seems like such a, an easy thing to do, to protect, you know, the people that you, that you care about in your community. So, it makes, yeah, I will, I will stop there so that we can, we can save some time. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Crowell?
Thank you, President Isley. I'm also 100% behind this. Some of us live here with our parents, and they are somebody that we think about every day in our community, and how we can help them in any way, with daily life or with, you know, staying alive. And this is very important, and I agree with Member Grace and the others. The studies that I have read and the information that I have seen shows undoubtedly that wearing a mask protects the spread of the disease, and so I am 100% behind this. Thank you.
Councilmember Claude Felter?
I have a question, and then if someone would be willing to answer it, I have a follow-up comment. First, I wonder if I am reading the document correctly, and let me go back there, please, in part, what is the name of this section? Sorry. This is section 9.12.01 in Definitions, where it says, it starts on page four and goes to page five. In the first full paragraph that begins at the bottom of page four and goes onto page five, I wonder if I'm reading correctly that places of worship would be exempted from the mask requirement. Is that what I'm reading? Okay, and if so, then I'm a little bit concerned, because I have read that, well, and you know, it's been my experience that in churches, people sit close together; in synagogues, they sit close together; in mosques, they play, they pray close together. And I've read that there have been multiple cases in the United States of choir practices in churches, where something like 80 or 90% of the people in the room where the choir is practicing come down with coronavirus, because, as you probably know, when you sing, the droplets of the virus go further than when you're just talking in a normal voice. I, I don't know if we have the right to require this in places of worship, but I would like to protect more of our citizens and keep them safe, if it's possible to do that.
Okay. Thank you for the question, and I'm not sure I have an immediate answer for you on places of worship. So, Councilmember Grace, and then Councilmember Fall?
I, I think we are treading on more challenging territory if we try to regulate practice within places of worship. I, I just, I, based on, on what other communities and, and indeed entire states have done, that to me seems like a, a more difficult and, and less supportive action. But also, I, many of the churches in Athens are not open, though they, they legally could be. The ones that I know of are, are continuing to really value and, and make a top priority the health and well-being of their congregants, and thus are, are continuing to hold their services online. And so that, I, I would certainly personally strongly urge everyone to, to continue to worship from home, and, and can, and I certainly hope that, that churches will continue that practice. I, I do know of, of some churches in, some places where they, they have held parking lot services, where everyone stays in their car, and, but, I, that, that, those are my thoughts on that, if, if that answers your, your question. I don't know if the law director has any thoughts on our authority in that matter, that she wants to contribute.
Thank you, Member Grace.
Yeah, Law Director Elias?
I just was going to say, well said by Member Grace.
Okay. Great. And we were, I was going, Councilmember Fall, then Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you. My concern when hearing people say, "Well, we're doing it for the vulnerable people", right? We don't know how, and that kind of says, "Oh, the younger people aren't as vulnerable, but they act as vectors." But we don't know exactly what happens if people get, you know, less severe case of COVID-19. We do not know the long-term implications on everything from neurology to organ issues later in life. There were issues with the influenza pandemic, that there were things later in life. Everybody knows chickenpox, you can get shingles later in life. So, it's very important that everybody is at risk, everybody. And to even hone it in, is that it will be the mother of all preconditions that you would ever, never, ever, ever want with insurance. The military has said that they will not take COVID-19 people. This, it's, it's, I think we need to emphasize that every single person, no matter what the age, or how severe you may get it, you are at risk for some severe lifelong impactful experiences that you would probably rather not get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Councilmember Reisner?
Yeah, two things. The church issue, I'm just wondering, are, are churches regulated by the state fire marshal in terms of how many people can be in a room? That's a government regulation, isn't it?
The, the fire, the fire department does inspect churches.
No, I'm saying, like, like, as you can see, I'm in the city council room. It has a capacity of about 100. You cannot exceed 100 people in that room legally. That's why I'm asking about a church. Do they not also have a legal capacity that they are not allowed to exceed?
Oh, they, they do, but, you know, in the case of the First Methodist Church, it's 300 people in the congregation, you know, area, probably. I'm just making an estimate.
Right. Okay.
And I do, yeah, and I do know that several of the churches are governed also now, at this point, by their, their administrative hierarchies that are urging them not to meet yet.
Yes. But you see my point? The point is that there is government regulation of churches that is constitutional, and it has to do with public safety.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kotzis?
No, I got one more point.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I don't see anything here about nursing homes.
No?
You'll have to spell it out? I mean, residents in a nursing home, should they be required by the city to wear a mask?
Okay. That's a good question. I'm not sure that we're ready to answer that right tonight, but thank you for the question.
Well, that's what all this is for, right? To get this out?
Yep, absolutely. Councilmember Kotzis?
Yes, thank you. And this, and this was to help, uh, uh, Member Reisner's conversation. I did, I did have, I did have a call with the Athens City, or the Athens City-County Health Department, and right now, the space requirements, you know, so a building, you, you're allowed to have X amount of people, you know, it's rated to have so many people in there. It's different if you have a restaurant versus a retail space, but currently, right now, there are new, lower, lower capacities for, for all, all businesses based on COVID. So, I would believe that churches probably also have to comply with a lesser, lesser amount of people within that, that space.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the comments. If there are, if we're ready, I would like to, yes, we'll do Councilmember Claude Felter, and then since all the councilmembers have spoken, I do want to make sure we allow time for Mayor Patterson. So, Councilmember Claude Felter?
If we could jump to the, the fine that people would receive if they violate the mask ordinance, it sounds like it would be $100 off the top, and if people do not successfully appeal that or pay the fine within 30 days, it would go on their record as a misdemeanor. To me, I do think that would get people's attention, for sure, and, and that's probably why you're proposing such a large amount, but we have so many people who've lost their jobs and are unemployed, or who are already low income before this even started, that I just wonder if that would be hard for a lot of people to pay. And I just, from my own personal opinion, I just wonder if it would make sense to start with a, with a fee of, say, $50, which I still think would get most people's attention. And then if there's a second violation, maybe go to 100, but 100 seems, 100 would probably be fine in a, in a wealthy place, but we are not as wealthy as we were in January. And I think it could be considered almost punitive to people who are, are struggling financially right now, who might actually be the people least likely to have a ma, a mask right away. And so, I, I would just ask you to think about that a little more, please.
Councilmember Grace?
I, I felt that we want a fine that nobody wants to have to pay. And I also, to the enforcement part, that I don't think there will be a single instance of a, a police officer walking up to someone and say, "Hey, I see you don't have a mask on, here's your $100 fine." This is, this will be something that is handled in a very positive, supportive way. We will be, many businesses already have supplies of masks that they are willing to give to patrons, and this is likely something that would start at that level, where someone in a business is not wearing a mask, the business owner says, "To be here, you need to wear a mask. If you don't have one, I have one," and different businesses will give them or sell them. I believe, and I'll let someone else verify this, but I believe that we as the city are also going to be working to very soon have masks available, so that if the police are called to respond to someone who doesn't have a mask or is unwilling to mask, the first step is going to be, "You need to wear this to protect those who are around you. Here is a mask, and here is some information about why." It will, it will not be an immediate, "Bam, I happen to see you sneaking through the aisle over there, here's your $100 fine." People are going to be given plenty, plenty of opportunities to comply before they would have a cost assessed to them.
That is really good to know. Thank you very much, Member Grace. It's not explicitly addressed in the document, at least as far as I noticed. I, I wonder if we should have some sort of mention in there?
That is because, that is a matter of enforcement, which we leave to the executive branch of our government, in terms of how they want to enforce the law, and they have some latitude with that. And the other thing I wanted to say is that it, if someone does not appeal or does not pay the fine, it doesn't automatically become a misdemeanor conviction. They then, they receive a citation to come to court that is, and it is a misdemeanor citation, a minor misdemeanor citation, because they didn't pay the fine. There are lots of other circumstances where that can happen, and often, if someone appears in court and says, "Hey, I got this citation for not paying a fine," the judge can say, "Have you paid your fine now?" "Yes, I paid my fine." "Okay, case dismissed." So, it's not an automatic, "They didn't do it, they have a criminal conviction." And so, that's, I wanted to clarify that also.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. Councilmember Smedley, did you have a comment?
I did, thank you. I appreciate the question from Member Claude Felter. I do agree, it needs to be at the, at the level of $100, and I appreciate Member Grace's explanation of how, with that. And I appreciate Member Grace's explanation of how, what that would look like in reality. And I do know, certainly the American elaborate, he has mentioned possibly using some of the CARES Act funding to purchase masks and provide those for free to the public and to some businesses. HAPCAP has also offered to use some of those CARES Act funds to purchase masks in bulk to be able to provide those to those who need it. But I would agree with keeping it at $100. Thank you.
Thanks. That sounds like a nice segue to Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, President Isley. Thank you, council, for taking up what I believe to be an extremely important piece of legislation, that I am proud that we've all worked together on this. I think that is vitally important to mention as well. Going back to March, I believe that Governor Dwyane had done amazing things under immense pressure with a lot of the closings of different businesses. And things seem to be going in a real positive direction, even to the point that at one point, Governor Dwyane had mentioned that masks were going to be mandatory. And then a couple of days later, unfortunately, that was walked back to strongly recommended. And as council is aware, and I'm keenly aware of, in watching the continual rise in COVID-19 cases across the state of Ohio, and in particular here in Athens County, after having three active cases for over six weeks, and then things went from linear to exponential, we're seeing more and more cities across the state of Ohio taking into their own hands a way in which they can protect the citizens in which they serve by having mask ordinances. And for the city of Athens to take this up at this point in time, I think is, as elected officials, the most responsible thing that we can possibly be doing at this juncture in time. As was indicated, you know, in the past two weeks, we've seen unthinkable increases in COVID-19 cases here in Athens. I should point out that from March 17th through June 8th, we had one hospitalization due to COVID-19 here in Athens County. From June 9th through the present, that has increased. And again, this is cumulative, but it's increased to eight, so nine total. That too, I believe, is telling. The other telling thing is if you look closely at the health department, the Athens City Health Department, Athens City County Health Departments, daily reports is not just the number of cases, but the number of active cases, as Councilmember Grace has pointed out. The one metric that I'm always looking at is the number of recovered cases in comparison to the number of active cases. We're currently at 76 active cases and 34 recovered cases, not more than six or four days ago. We had 29 active and 29 recovered. So we've reached that point in which the actives have far exceeded the number of recovered cases here in the city of Athens. To address the issue of nursing homes and required masking that Councilmember Reisner brought up, I'm in total agreement with you, Councilmember Reisner. But I do believe that nursing home facilities are not open to the public. And this ordinance speaks to businesses that are open to the public and requiring face coverings. But I think that is worth looking at the language, Councilmember Reisner, to see if we truly do need to add that, or whether that is being managed unto itself. We do have the opportunity to use CARES Act money, or a portion of it, to purchase additional face coverings, the disposable surgical masks for businesses that need them to distribute, as well as having the police department have extra face coverings with them as they're out and about. We're also going to be using some of the CARES Act funding to produce, hopefully this Tuesday, we will have one or 2,000 uniform signs that can be posted in business on their doors or windows or somewhere that's highly visible and recognizable, to where it's a uniform message that is going out, that speaks to the mandatory nature of having to have face coverings to come into that place of business. We are also looking at, on the Big Belly Trash Receptacles in the Uptown area, having wraps put on them that are reminders to people that you are required to wear a face covering when out in the public. I do want to speak briefly, if I may, to the issue of the schools that came up earlier. This was indicated, the Athens City School District, any school district, has its own governing body to include the school board. We have no jurisdiction over our Athens City School District. That holds true as well for universities and colleges. State University, Ohio University, we do not have jurisdiction over state property and the way they manage themselves. But one of the critical things about this piece of legislation that I want everyone who's on tonight, as well as council, to recognize is that Ohio University will have a required face covering policy. And for them to have it with students in the classroom and faculty and staff, and for us to not have it creates a rather large disconnect. It'll make a huge disconnect to where, when students or faculty or staff are migrating from campus into the Uptown area or anywhere, where if we didn't have something like this, that doesn't create continuity. Also to share is that the Ohio Department of Education, which is the governing body over the school systems, they will be requiring, if there's face to face instruction, face coverings for grades three through 12. And again, if the school district is going to do it, that too creates another, for us, a level of continuity to where we're all messaging the same thing. But at the end of the day, it's been a lot of council, you've already mentioned this, is it is our sworn responsibility to protect the citizens of the city of Athens. And I feel really strongly about this. For us to enact a mandatory face covering with the guidelines that have been mentioned already, it is the responsible thing. To do nothing is to not do our jobs. And so I need for that to be clear and understood by everyone. I don't, you know, Councilmember Claude Felter, you mentioned flattening the curve. What we're seeing in Athens right now harkens of the language and the conversations that were being had back in early March, in doing what we needed to do to flatten the curve, and here's how we can flatten the curve. And if you look at our curve right now, it's an upward trajectory. It's, we're, you know, in looking at this, and I'm not saying this as an alarmist, I'm just saying this for everyone to be aware and be super conscious, as well as super careful, is that we are on the beginning of this exponential increase, which is, again, why it's extremely important for council to act expeditiously in getting this to go through.
And Councilmember Fall, did you have a question, a query to ask the mayor? Yes, please.
Yeah, people wrote in through chat asking about testing and the situation with testing, and also the situation with the fair. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought, am I to answer that? Were you asking that of me? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Let me start with the fair. And I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought up any of our uptown events that typically take place in a non-COVID timeframe. We were just recently informed that the last major organizer, that being Ohio Brew Week, that they were hoping that maybe things would change through the summer, later on in the summer. But the executive director for Ohio Brew Week has pulled the plug on this year's event with the hope that things will be better next summer to where they can reengage again. They will do some virtual things, but there will be no Ohio Brew Week here this year. To the fair, I have not heard any, there's no indication that it will not be taking place this summer. So the only event that is still potentially going to occur, is an event that I have a level of concern over, but I haven't heard anything about that as of yet. And I apologize, your first question, Councilmember Fall?
Testing, what situation with people being able to get testing and things like that?
Right. And I'm glad you brought that up as well. Let me just share with the viewing audience and with council, there is testing going on here in Athens. There's testing at Oblenus Hospital, there is testing at Holster Clinic. There's also testing that can be done at CBS Pharmacy Drive Thru on East State Street. You do need to call and schedule a time to do any testing at the CBS on East State Street. However, and I can't stress this enough, if you suspect that you are exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19, you need to contact your primary care provider. And if you don't have one, Oblenus Hospital, Ohio Health, will work with you if you don't have a primary care provider. But you need to go through the proper assessment through your primary care provider, and then they will call over to where the testing takes place for Oblenus Hospital, and not overwhelm an already increased load emergency room at Oblenus Hospital. And so, again, I can't stress that enough. Oblenus Hospital has seen a significant rise in people coming into the emergency room. But again, the proper way for being tested, if you're concerned that you may have COVID-19, is to go through your primary care physician, or again, you can go through CBS and be tested there. There is, so there is testing going on. I can't, you know, I believe that there's certainly enough to be done. It's not like there's a shortfall of test kits at any of those sites.
One last, Councilmember Fall? Last thing? Yeah, what about tracing? How, because I think that there hasn't been a lot of information for people, so we're getting some more questions about tracing, they're doing contact tracing through the health department, those sort of things. It's not like these cases are just arriving and they go, oh, look at that, there's other things that happen behind each one, and contact tracing and stuff. So that's happening. Thank you.
That is probably the vast majority of the workload that's going on with the health department right now is contact tracing. They're doing, I believe, at this point, a great job at doing the contact tracing. They haven't been, they have a heavy load, they haven't been overwhelmed, but they have a heavy load. The fear would be that the health department, if this continues to spike like it is, to where they do become overwhelmed, that they will continue to do their contact tracing, which is why we are seeing such a sharp rise in cases, is because they are identifying people, having them tested.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. We've had one, or several questions about whether or not the draft document will be available. This is a public document, and I believe we could post that, the draft, on the city website. If people want to take a look at that, we could make that available. And there have been several queries. Are there any other, I know that council members are probably more adept than I am in looking at all the questions that are coming in, because we have 95 attendees and they're posting questions. Are there any other questions that council members have seen that they want us to address? Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that you may want to go over sort of some of the procedures, some of the people in the chat room are asking, can they ask questions and have them answered?
Yeah, and we are.
Want to explain the procedures a little bit?
Thank you. Yes, so thanks for asking that. And then, Councilmember Crowe? If we're through the initial discussion amongst the council members, yes, we would like to open it up to questions from attendees or comments that they may have to make. I will be setting the timer, and it will be three minutes that people have if they have a comment that they wish to make. And we can proceed with, we can proceed with some of those with the help of Scott Thompson, our co-host here on the Zoom meeting. What you need to do is to, as you speak, you need to give your name and your address so that you are identified. So are there people that are wanting to speak at this point? And I see somebody named Aaron, is that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm trying, new to Zoom, I never know if this is going through. Anyways, I've already voiced it in the chat, but I find.
And Aaron, can you identify your full name and your address? So we have.
My name is Aaron Reinhardt, I live at 176 North Congress Street. I am just chiming in, I've already mentioned a few times in the chat, that I do not understand the exception for bars and restaurants. On June 30th, Dr. Fauci listed bars as the riskiest setting. And after we reopened our bars and restaurants on Court Street, that's part of when we've seen these massive spikes in cases throughout the city. So it doesn't really make any sense to me to list an exception for two very high risk areas. In fact, council and Grace even mentioned how multiple businesses have already had to shut down because their employees are becoming vectors of infection, because they are being infected. And I think that's another thing that needs to be understood, is that this isn't just about people going to restaurants and bars who are choosing to make these risks. There are people who are being economically coerced, or coerced via the website that was made by Ohio Department of Labor and Family Services to report people who would not be going back to work. Employees are being coerced to go back into jobs that this city council is currently failing to make safe. There's no strong reason we should be creating exceptions for what has already been established as some of the riskiest settings, where we already have employees getting sick because their employers aren't enforcing these policies on their own. Trusting employers has evidently failed. And I think it's highly irresponsible for the concerns of, I'm not sure, I guess it wasn't fully explained during the meeting, but what appears to be the concerns of business owners to overrule the concerns of employees and the community at large that will be affected by exponential growth as we make exceptions for the most risky settings in which people are congregating specifically to take off their masks, discuss, talk, drink, what have you. I'd really love to hear an explanation as to why that oversight was made, and why that was not a concern of the city council, the employees of these bars and restaurants, or the specific advice of the head epidemiologist in the country.
Thank you, Aaron, for making the comment. And perhaps I was reading a little bit too fast when I read the 12 exceptions, is only while you're eating or drinking at the restaurant or bar. So at other moments, when you're waiting, or if you get up from your table to go to the restroom, and you leave your area where you might be with your family, and you're walking through the general crowd, you're put on your mask.
That, I'm not sure if that, there's any real evidence that that's much of a solution, especially in the case of bars, where you can walk around holding a can or a drink of some sort, whether it's full or not, I'm not sure if people are going to be checking everybody's bottles at the bar.
Okay. Well, thank you for the comments, and we will take that under consideration, and we want to move on to allow other people time for comments. Thanks so much. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment from the attendees? Yes, I see Kelly Enora, if you could. If you could let us know your full name and address, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Kelly Blaser, I live at 135 North Lancaster Street. And first, I'd like to say I'm in complete agreement with everything that Aaron just brought up. Right now, the state of Ohio. Right now, the state of Ohio Department of Health says that 6.7% of tests that they have run have come back positive. That's one out of every 15 people. So if there are 15 people on a bar, like in a bar, on a patio, that means odds are, one of them is positive by their statistics. And I know that's a simplification, but I think that's really important that we look at it that way. And you've all mentioned flattening the curve, but what you failed to mention is that when we flatten the curve, we were in lockdown. We didn't have open bars, we didn't have open restaurants, we didn't have open coffee shops. Like, it's very different situation that we're in right now. And this list of exemptions basically reads like a laundry list of high-risk situations. So I just really fail to understand how it's worth going through what is certain to be a bit of a struggle to enforce these mask regulations, when in essence, you're at the same time avoiding enforcing them in all of the high-risk situations that really matter. Like, this is not like a situation where we can kind of compromise, like health professionals have emphasized that it's not just mask wearing, but consistent mask wearing that is important here. And so to have these gaps, particularly, as Aaron said, at bar environments where, I mean, something like, are you eating and drinking? You're perpetually eating and drinking in a bar environment, or in a restaurant environment. So no, I don't think that that's going to keep us safe. And I would strongly urge all of you to look at this list of exemptions. Like, I want to know which of these exemptions do you have the power to take off of this? Because frankly, with these exemptions, none of us are going to be safe. And that's all I have to say there.
Thank you so much. And are there, is there someone else who would like to make a comment? Councilmember Grace.
Hey, I just wanted to state that in the process of working on this ordinance, we did not take any of the listed exemptions lightly at all. And I would like to ask Law Director Eliasen if she would speak to council's authority, or lack thereof, to regulate whether, which businesses may be open or not at this time.
Thank you for your question. And I believe that when we were looking at this, right now, there has to be, I believe, six feet between groupings of people. And that's what the Ohio Department of Health has recognized. When we were looking at what the exemptions are, we recognize the Ohio Department of Health, their mandate of six feet between tables or groupings. And in this exemption, clearly stated that if a patron is not at their table, then they have to wear a face mask. It's something that council can further discuss. I don't believe that we are going to have the authority to completely shut down a business. I am fairly confident of that. And wants to further discuss it, they certainly can.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments or questions that people would like to ask? Yes, I see someone named Karen. If you give us your full name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Karen? Okay. We have Mr. Keister, and if Chad, if you would give us your full name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Chad Kifler, K-I-F-T-E-R. I live at 4592 Bestinmer Road. But I do get into Athens quite a bit. And my second and fourth book, they predict how climate change would cause this disease, and I think you guys should look into that. I also think you should arrest those at the pro-police rally for attempted murder, assault, and other crimes for not wearing a mask. And it's not only a bad example, it's a crime. This resolution doesn't need to be passed for people to be charged with attempted murder. And actually, of course, it's premeditated murder, because you're already educated about it. I wear a gas mask also, and it works fine. It doesn't bother me at all, it just makes my lungs stronger. And I also administer Sacred Space Church. I've been doing it for more than a year. You know, people don't have to go to church these days. They can, they can just do it online. And one of my sermons is God wants people to social distance. So, and the other thing is I do want council to ban no-noc war. And for our government breaks, and that's why I don't leave where I have, where I am now, and they spread COVID too. So keep up the good work.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Keister. And I'm going to ask a question for, just before we begin with Mr. Swank, I need to direct Scott Thompson, if he could do a double check. Somebody said they were wanting to note that they were speaking. I'm not sure how that indicates for you in the queue, Scott. But if you could do a double check for us, that would be great. Thank you so much. We're trying to recognize everybody that does want to speak or make a comment. We now have Mr. Alan Swank, if you could give us full name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Great. Thank you. Alan Swank, 40 Townsend Place here in Athens. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all the council members who have asked through email and answered questions through email this week. It's been quite a load. I have two very, very quick questions. First question, does council have the authority to have businesses require masks? As an example, the Costco company, you cannot get into a Costco unless you were wearing a mask. And I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, seen some of the social media videos of people being turned away. So question number one, does council have that authority?
And Director, Law Director Eliasen, would you be willing to answer that?
Well, in this ordinance, it's a mandate that in a business that you wear a mask, a private business can certainly make a decision about who comes into the business and who doesn't. And if the private business doesn't want someone in because they don't wear a mask, then certainly, just like Costco, they can ask the person to leave. In this situation, we, through this ordinance, are encouraging people to wear masks through a penalty. And as the mayor said, there will be signs that say, wear a mask community where you have to wear a mask. And I think that that helps a business with being able to say to a customer, look, there's a sign on the door that says that this community enforces their mask ordinance. I'm asking you to wear a mask. If the person would refuse, then this is complaint-driven, and certainly a phone call could be made to the police to come and have a discussion with the person there about wearing a mask. And perhaps give them information about why you need to wear a mask and provide the mask. So private businesses do have the right to decide who comes onto their property. They could certainly say to a person, you have to leave this property. And then if the person didn't leave, then it could be a trespass, and that's a fourth-degree misdemeanor. Mr. Swank, I don't know if that answers your question.
No, no, that's good, and that's a perfect segue to question number two. Today, I had to run down to one of the local big-box stores to get some repair materials, and quite a few people were in the store without masks, quite a few, well over 50%. People have different views on masks, but if a person wanted to file a complaint, to who should they complain, who should they call, what would be the process for that?
I'll let Councilmember Grace answer.
Well, this, our local police department has the authority to issue citations for this order. So if that would be, I would recommend calling the non-emergency number. You could also request that the proprietor or manager of the business first initiate that conversation with the customer, and and then if they could also decide whether or not they wanted to follow up with a call to the police department.
Great. Well, what I'm trying to avoid here is what could be, possibly be a very contentious situation, because there are people, you know, unfortunately adamant on both sides of this issue, where there really shouldn't be sides, and I would hate for, you know, this to lead to confrontations. But I appreciate your answers. Thank you very much for your action on this council.
Okay, thank you. And is there anyone else that would like to speak or make a comment or ask a question? We have somebody who's come up, and if you could give us your full name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Britain Posey. I live on 42 Drive in Athens. Mayor Patterson, President Nisley, distinguished council members, thank you for taking my question and allowing me to ask these important, you know, important details. I work in a hotel and restaurant in a local area, and being back on that after being furloughed for eight weeks, it has seen a boom in business, which is great for the area. However, it has caused much concern, not just to me, but to fellow employees and also fellow guests that come and stay with us and visit Athens. Is, you know, like the previous caller said, there is very, there's a very big debate about this, unfortunately. And I guess my first question is, how do businesses protect themselves for those that refuse to comply with the mask ordinance? And, you know, I don't know, you know, Councilwoman Grace spoke on this, you know, I guess to involve the local police department, but at what level, you know, do we take care of this?
And once again, I think Councilmember Grace did answer it well, and we're going to have to see with some of these situations. But the first thing, I suppose, is it is a conversation with the individual or individuals who have refused to wear the mask. And that it is, you know, that business is prerogative if they wanted to make a call to press a complaint, to say that the person had not complied with the request to issue a mask, at which point is what we go back to what Law Director Eliasen said, that that it would be considered a trespass violation, which is a misdemeanor.
Understandable. Thank you for that answer. The other big question I get, I am 24, turning on 25, and often Athens and OU, especially with students come back, is known for its party culture, and that's something that's alive and well in Athens. I myself don't take part, but many my age do. It has been very alarming to see around the city of Athens that house parties have continued with no social distancing. I wonder how council is addressing this, and I don't know if it's in the order specifically for masks, but house parties are obviously a big issue, and often in other areas, you know, such as Florida, and have been the cause of big spikes in cases. So I wanted to know how council was addressing this, and how the police department is taking this very seriously on complaints at house parties and large gatherings.
Okay. And what we'll do is, I'd like to defer to the mayor on the gatherings, and then I think Councilmember Fall also had a comment. So maybe after the mayor's finished, Councilmember Fall, if you had some other comments.
Thank you, President Nisley, and thank you caller on this. So the police department, the governor's order is still in effect, and as I understand it, it's indefinite for gatherings of 10 or more unrelated individuals. And so the police department will respond to gatherings they see, and remind them of that, and basically mandate that they disperse from that, from that area. We also have the nuisance party ordinance that we use, again, we use that in a non-COVID period, to where if we see that there are nuisance party violations, those are citable offenses. But, you know, we're still under the governor's order, and so people are, that is addressed if there are gatherings greater than 10, say, on a front porch or elsewhere. I do want to go back real quick to something that you had brought up earlier when it comes to businesses. And that being that I have been called or emailed by several managers of businesses, to include the hotel industry here in Athens. And this ordinance, I believe, is really going to be helpful for them, because it gives them something that they can point to and go, when someone's challenging them, you know, and they can say, this is a city mandate that is being requested, because as I understand it, a lot of businesses that, even those that are requiring now for face coverings before, if someone's coming into their establishment, that they're getting pushback, and other than issuing a trespass or something like that, or claiming that if someone won't leave, they, a lot of businesses feel like they don't have enough to, behind them to be able to enforce that. And this ordinance will certainly help with that. When I've spoken to some of these businesses, they were certainly pleased that the city was at least entertaining this ordinance and moving it forward and hopefully passing it.
And Councilmember Fall, did you want?
Yeah, just quickly to follow up on what Mayor Patterson was saying. Businesses now require shoes and shirt for service, especially restaurants and things. And if you don't have shoes or shirts, they can ask you to leave, and that's a very common thing, and it happens all the time. And so with the mandate, it will definitely help employees be able to ask that of people, but most businesses, if they're especially in servers, have a protocol right now to deal with people who come in with no shoes and stuff. So we do have safety regulations that are in these establishments as it is. This is just another one for this lovely COVID time. Thank you.
And do we have any other comments from public members, comments or questions? I see we have Sherry Oliver, and yes, your full name and your address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sherry Oliver. I live at 126 Lamar Drive. I want to thank council and the mayor for moving this through so quickly. I feel like this is incredibly important, especially as our numbers continue to rise every day. I do want to ask if either councillor or the mayor can comment on the exemption for responders. I do have some concerns, just because so many of our first responders, especially our police department, are having really close contact with so many people throughout the city. I feel like that's putting both them and the people that they're in contact with in a direct risk of transmitting or contracting the virus. And so I was just wondering what the thinking was behind that exemption.
I can take that up, President Nisley, if you would like me to. And thank you, Sherry Oliver, for being on the call tonight. What the police department has been instructed, again, aside from even this ordinance, is that if they are finding themselves in a position to where it is something pretty serious, again, if they're having to deal with someone who, like an armed robbery, or they're having someone who's fleeing, and they're having to pursue them for whatever reason. It's situations like that where a face mask can actually become an impediment to a police officer. But if a police officer is, let's say, there's been a complaint for you know, a theft at a store or something like that, the police officer is, has been told that you will wear a mask when you get out and when you are dealing with the store manager or whatever. And so that's our, the way things are going to be managed moving forward. Even if an officer were to, let's say, come up to a house that is having a house party, where there's clearly more than 10 unrelated people that are on the porch or something like that, that they would wear a face mask when they went up to that porch as well, to address that situation. But if there is something serious going on that requires them to not have to wear that mask, then that's part of that policy, part of, it's part of this ordinance as well. So it doesn't 100% exempt them. It, but it certainly is there so that they do have the ability to not have to wear a mask if they're in pursuit on the ground with somebody or having to deal with something that, some level of conflict.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And are there others who would like to make comments? Yes, Steve, if you could give us your full name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Oh, is this for me?
This is.
I'm so, I'm, thank you so much. Thank you, council, for taking this up. up. This is really important. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Patterson. Very, very briefly, is there, is there a feasible way for the police to, to pass out masks to those who are not wearing masks before issuing citations or fines? That that be step one? I know they're doing that in some cities. My name is Steve Richter. I'm, sorry, I forgot this part. My name is Steve Richter. I live at 19 North Shannon Avenue here in Athens. Thank you.
And Mayor Patterson, I think some of this enforcement is going to fall to you, the police department, if you would feel like responding on this?
Sure. And Mr. Richter, I mean, I think you're spot on. What is, is likely to happen is there's, there's, there's going to be a lot of warnings that go out initially when the police officers arrive because there has been a complaint-based response by the police to, to something that there will be a warning. But if, if the individual persists to wear it, then they will be cited. Your, your comment about the face mask, giving a face mask first is not a bad one at all. Again, we certainly can use some of the CARES Act money for COVID-19 that has come to the city to where our officers do have a cache of these disposable face masks that they can, can hand out. But you raise a good point.
Thanks. And is there another person from the public that would wish to make a comment? Looks like we do Nancy Walker, full name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, I was wondering if we get information from the contact tracing. Yeah, I live on 13 Avon Place. If we get information from the contact tracing, that would help identify possible sources or pinpoints of where the, where the infections are occurring or coming from. Would that help decide what could be, needs to be closed down or what needs to be limited or, or what moves we need to make other than what we're making now?
Thanks for the, for the question. And, and I'll attempt some of this, but I also want to draw to the law director, too. I know there've been some other questions on could we close bars, could we halt the sale of alcohol? And, but as Law Director, I think, Eliasen, you indicated that's something that the governor, you know, can or, you know, has the authority over, and the city does not have jurisdiction to create law that would be different from what the state law would be. So, Law Director Eliasen, could you help us a little bit on this comment?
I was having trouble listening or trouble hearing what was said. I was adjusting my volume. Could you repeat the question?
I had asked if there was information through contact tracing that would help us identify places or sources of infection that we could help, that would help us decide what steps to take other than the ones we're taking now, like maybe closing down bars and, and restaurants. And I think if we found that there were a serious number of infections that could be traced back to a certain party or a certain event, we would probably do something about that.
So because of privacy concerns, I don't believe that we're getting specific information about exactly, well, of course, we wouldn't know who it is that has COVID-19, but I don't believe that we're getting information either.
Did you do anything about patterns or?
I don't believe so. I think, Mayor, can you answer that? Because you're the one that gets that information.
Sure. I, I mean, I can, can tell you what, what I know in my conversations almost daily with the public, the Athens City County Health Department, is because of HIPAA, there's only certain information that can be dispersed. They cannot, they cannot issue out addresses and things of that nature. And with contact tracing, they can't with that either. I mean, that falls under health guidelines or HIPAA. The, what, what they do, though, is for first responders, EMS, fire and police, those are addresses, if they are within your jurisdiction, they are issued to those entities so that they know, if they're having to respond, they know what they're responding to. But that is not information that is available to, to the public. As a matter of fact, it's, it's typically not information that's even available to me.
Well, I don't want, I don't mean public. I mean, so that you, lawmakers can make policy that actually is based on fact, factual information.
I don't believe, yes, I don't believe we're getting that information.
We are, we, we do have access to information about active and, and total and also recovered cases within the city of Athens. That data, Ms. Walker, we can get, but we can't get it to where it hones down to, say, what the numbers are looking like in a neighborhood on the west side or the south side or the central, central core of the city.
Nancy, thanks. Thanks for the comments and questions. We have three other people who are waiting to make comments. Can we have the, the next person, Scott? It's Brian Clark. If you could give us full name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Brian Clark, 24 South May, Athens, Ohio. First, I want to commend the, the city council as well as our citizens for their apparent general support for this. I think the data clearly suggests wearing masks reduces disease transmission, and it seems like it's a no-brainer. The other thing I'm hearing from people in the community is a concern about the hotspots of infection relating back to bars and restaurants. And I think I would go a step further and likely link it back even closer to bars based on the epidemiological data that I've seen. And I'm hearing our law director say that we're sort of hamstrung from state orders about that we really can't do anything about that. So I guess I would encourage our council members to think about alternative and creative strategies to mitigate those hotspots. I don't know the answer to that, but I think some creative legal sleuthing could likely lead to interesting ways to perhaps particularly alcohol, you know, there's all kinds of odd nuanced laws pertaining to who can sell alcohol, how you can buy it and transmit it. So I guess I'm encouraging some creative lawmaking to see if there's a way to, to, to mitigate that outbreak. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments, Brian. Okay. And do we have a next person? Yes, Claudia, if you would like to give your full name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
I am Claudia Gonzalez Vallejo from 10980 North Point Drive. This goes along with the comments already made, the concern for the bars, and I just have kind of maybe a solution for this. If we are following the distancing ordinance, couldn't that be translated to maximum capacity for establishments and then to make sure then that we enforce it that way so that we avoid those crowded places where people can just take their masks off? So if it's, you know, it's more difficult to think in terms of distancing, but it's easier to think in terms of how many people could be maximum capacity if we keep the 60, the six feet distancing.
Thank you for the comments. It's a good idea. And we probably, you know, as part of our education program, too, to be able to share with the businesses some suggestions on that, you know, and how they're, and also to work with them on how they're maintaining that six-foot distances. Mayor Patterson, did you have a comment on that?
I did. To kind of follow on to what Ms. Claudia Gonzalez Vallejo was saying, that, you know, the governor's directive for reopening and in particular for bars and restaurants, it's, it's clearly stated in there that they need to be able to set up whatever their square footage is for where the patrons sit, that they have to maintain six foot of distance between groups, groupings of people that, that do come in, which is a little disconcerting. I, I feel like that, that was kind of a, a flaw in the, the governor's directive. But there, there already is basically by, by the square footage of the space and the six-foot separation that they, that kind of by default creates a limit to how many people can actually be in an establishment. But, but Claudia, I clearly am aware that there were several places that completely disregarded that over the, the past weekend or two in terms of social distancing, which was extremely disturbing.
And we did also have a good comment from the public section that, to clarify, that public health requires, it's not six feet or a mask, it's six feet and a mask. So good, good distinction. So thank you for that comment. And yes, Councilmember Grace.
Yeah, thank you. I was just wanting to bring that comment into the public discussion as well. And, and to amplify that by saying, none of us here think that if we, if everybody just wears a mask and that, that's the only thing we do, that suddenly everything's going to be all sunny and rosy and that this is going to fix everything. We, we know that this is one of many steps that people should take. And I strongly encourage anyone who is, who is able, stay home, stay within a small, tight-knit circle of people that you interact with. Order your groceries for pickup if you are able. Ask a friend who is already going to bring you something if you really need something. We, like, my family is doing the best that we can to wear masks anytime we go out in public, but also to really limit the amount of time we spend going in public because my, my husband has to go to work every day. And so even though the chances are small that he would pick something up and bring it back to us, we want to be very aware that anyone that we interact with, we could possibly be spreading this disease to them, whether we have any symptoms or not. And I just want to highlight, that's what wearing masks is about. It is about recognizing each individual's responsibility to think of and care for their community. This is about doing what we can to keep our neighbors safe and healthy. I, I have wonderful, dear neighbors that I love that are at high risk for this disease. My parents live not far away. They are high risk for this disease. They're children. And as Member Fall mentioned earlier, everyone is at risk because we don't know what the long-term complications of this disease could be. I read a study from a hospital in London. There were serious neurological symptoms related to this disease, neurological symptoms in people who had no respiratory symptoms even. There's so much we still have to learn medically about this, but we do know that it's better to not get it. And it's better, like, I, I want to do everything I can to not risk possibly infecting anyone else, anyone. And I, I think that Member Kotzis said it really well. If, if this saves one person from being on a ventilator, it, it is worth it. It, and, and I just, I want to highlight, don't, don't think now people are going to wear masks and that's the solution. Keep in mind, this is part of a plan, part of, part of an approach. Wear masks, maintain distance, and just think of it as, as the one of thing, one of the things we can do to keep our whole community healthy and strong, vibrant socially and economically. It's, it's really important for all of those things.
Well put, Councilmember Grace. Mayor Patterson, and then we do have another, some more public comments.
I'll be brief. President Nisley, I, I do want to point out to anyone who's, who's on this tonight, I encourage people to go to corona, coronavirus.ohio.gov. There is a public health advisory system that is but put into place, and it's pretty simple. It's color coding on a number scale to where level one, which is yellow, is public emergency, active exposure. Level two is, level two public emergency is increased exposure and spread. Athens County is currently at level two. And so people might be thinking about this, well, we're doing it in Athens, what could be going on in the rest of the county? And unfortunately, or however you want to think of it, level three public emergency, which is very high exposure and spread, limited activity as much as possible, it's at level three, which is red, color-coded red, that Governor Dwyane has been enacting countywide face coverings. And so as I understand it, in talking with our liaison, the governor earlier today, Bonnie Ward, that, you know, if Athens County were to, to go to level three red, that the, it would be countywide as well. But we need to get this ordinance in place now and not wait for the county to upgrade to level three, or worse yet, level four, which is purple color, color-coded, which as I understand it, Franklin County is close to that happening.
Thanks. Cynthia, if you could give us your full name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak or ask questions.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Brunti. I live on Blackburn Road in Athens. I have concerns. I have kids going to the fair for 4H. How are they going to enforce the face masks at the fair? Will that be solely on the fair board and the fair committee members, or will they have some type of backup to help with that?
Law Director Eliasen?
We have no authority on the fairground property. So that will be up to the fair board to enforce. That is a agricultural society, and the agricultural society is its own political subdivision. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't make the recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for the question. We, it looks like council members have a few more comments, Councilmember Crowe and Councilmember Grace.
Thank you. This is really a procedural question, or maybe a question to the law director. Given that this is a committee of the whole meeting, and this is an emergency meeting, and we will have another emergency meeting on Monday, when, under normal procedures, we would have a first reading of this ordinance, but due to the necessity to pass something very quickly, I am a bit surprised that we haven't read through portions of the ordinance in this meeting. There's a lot of confusion in the chat room and the questions and answers about exceptions. Bars and restaurants are not accepted to this. Outside of closing bars and restaurants, the necessity to eat or drink means that your mask has to be removed at some point in order to do that. But I, I don't know if it makes sense if, Member Grace, if we're allowed by rules to read through certainly the, the, these exceptions, because lots of people are talking about the exceptions, and there aren't really that many exceptions. And I want to make it clear, and if we're going to pass, if we're going to do this, you know, quickly through emergency session on Monday, is there a problem of reading through the entire ordinance or at least some of the very pertinent?
I think the, the sections, and that would be fine. I think the be it ordained. I don't know that we need all the whereas is about, you know, county, just, but certainly the, the four conditions under which we're requiring it, and then the 12 exceptions. And Councilmember Grace, do you want to read through those?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that. Okay, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Section one, effective immediately, all individuals within the city of Athens shall wear a face covering over the individual's nose, mouth and chin in accordance with the following. A, when entering, exiting or waiting in line to enter a place of business that is open to the public, and while inside a place of business, as to the areas within the place of business that are accessible to and are intended for the use of the public. B, when entering, exiting or waiting in line to enter a city of Athens-operated building or facility that is open to the public, and while inside a city of Athens-operated building or facility, as to the areas within such city of Athens facility that are accessible to and are intended for the use of the public. C, in any public transportation, such as a bus or other public transit vehicle, a taxi or ride-sharing vehicle, any other vehicle for hire, or at a transit stop or waiting area for any public transportation. D, in any outdoor space or outdoor D, in any outdoor space or outdoor place where or when a person is unable to maintain or does not maintain physical separation of not less than six feet from others who are not members of their own household. Section two, the requirement to wear a face covering through this ordinance does not apply in the following situations. Any individual who cannot wear a face covering because of a medical condition, mental health condition, or developmental disability, or who is unable to remove the face covering without assistance. And any individual who should not wear face coverings under the CDC guidance. An individual is not required to produce medical documentation of the condition or disability. However, an employer may require such documentation from an employee in accordance with state and federal law. Item B, children under 10 years old. Item C, restaurant and bar patrons while eating or drinking. If a patron is not seated at his or her table or at the bar, a face covering is required. D, school and childcare center individuals, including students, administrators, and teachers, on or in school, school district, or childcare center facilities, so that those entities may follow the regulations and guidelines promulgated by their governing bodies and the Ohio Department of Education. For this ordinance, childcare centers, school, or school district means any public, private, or charter center, school, or institution that provides education or supervision for children of any age from birth up to and including all of the following grades or education levels, kindergarten through 12th grade, or a university, college, or similar post-secondary institution. In settings where it is not practicable or feasible to wear a face covering, such as when receiving dental services, medical treatments, or while swimming. F, walking or exercising outdoors so long as physical separation of not less than six feet is maintained, or while walking or exercising outdoors with other members of the same household. G, while actually engaged in exercising in a gym or other similar indoor facility so long as physical separation of not less than six feet is maintained and the individual wears a face covering at all times when not actually engaged in exercising. H, when individuals are alone or able to maintain a physical separation of not less than six feet in their work office, conference room, or other workspace not intended for the general public. I, when inside a personal or commercial vehicle, either parked or moving, that is not a vehicle described in section 1C. So that references the ride-sharing vehicles and city transit buses. Those are vehicles where it is required. And so just to clarify what that reference was. J, individuals while acting in their official capacity as a public safety employee or emergency responder when wearing a face covering would interfere with or limit their ability to carry out their official duties or functions. These include peace officers, firefighters, and other public safety or emergency medical personnel that support public safety operations. K, individuals complying with the directions of public safety employees or emergency responders as described in section 2J. L, an individual completing a task who would be out of compliance with industry safety standards like NEC, OSHA, NFPA, et cetera. And then we have the definitions. And the first definition is face covering. A face covering means a piece of tightly woven cloth, fabric, or other material that fully covers the mouth, nose, and chin, and that is secured with ear straps or otherwise secured so as to prevent slipping. A face covering may be factory-made or may be handmade and improvised from household materials. Face coverings include but are not limited to bandanas, scarves, medical mask, and cloth mask, and also include respirators, N95 masks, or other personal protective equipment that provides a higher level of protection than a face covering defined in this section. A face covering shall be worn so as to cover the nose, mouth, and chin in compliance with the CDC's guidance on wearing face coverings. The next item defined is place of business, which means any facility, building, or structure operated by or for a business engaged in the sale or other transaction of any kind or anything of value in exchange for goods, commodities, services, or temporary lodging, and that is open to the general public or by appointment, and includes but is not limited to grocery stores, retail stores, pharmacies, healthcare facilities, restaurants and bars, including outdoor areas for such facilities, hotels and motels excluding the rented room or suite, gyms and similar facilities but excluding religious facilities. And finally, the penalty section. Any violation of this section shall be considered an administrative offense requiring a fine of $100 payable to the city of Athens through the Athens City Police Department. Any person cited with a violation of this ordinance who wishes to appeal the violation shall visit the Athens City Police Department and request that an appeal be set before the appeals board established for this purpose by the Athens City County Health Department. The decision of the appeals board shall be final. Any person cited with a violation of this ordinance who does not request an appeal or pay the required administrative fine within 30 days shall receive a minor misdemeanor citation into Athens County Municipal Court. This ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor, and shall remain in effect during the pendency of the State of Ohio Executive Order 2020-0ID.
Thanks, Councilmember Grace. Councilmember Claude Filter.
First, Councilmember Grace, thank you very much for reading that entire document. I think that the people who have hung in there for this whole meeting are probably glad to know all the details. Hearing that again reminded me of one more question that I had, and I see that on chat, on the chat, at least two or three people are asking a similar question to what I was thinking of. And that is that what I have read is that if people are exercising vigorously, like if they're walking, jogging, or bike riding, whatever, like on the bike path or in other places, that the like the water droplets that come out of their mouth that can contain the virus particles go much further than when they're just talking. And so I've seen different distances mentioned. Someone on here said they ought to be 10, I believe he said 10 to 20 meters apart. I've seen mention that people should be 20 to 25 feet apart, but the general consensus seems to be that people definitely need to be further apart than six feet. But I don't know if you're looking at other public health sources.
Councilmember Grace, did you have a comment?
Yes, just to address that, this whole pandemic is a situation where we are learning every day. We are learning from scientists, our physicians, our public health directors, management, and workers. And what has been recommended consistently is six feet distance. And I think though there are certainly times when I personally feel that that is inadequate, and certainly if I was in an enclosed room with, and I would not be comfortable not being masked within six feet of someone. However, we, it's helpful to introduce rules that people are already familiar with unless other authorities such as the CDC or the Ohio Department of Health are putting out different recommendations. And so I just, I think that's for me, what it came down to is consistency with what people have been hearing, which and is, you know, this is much of this, like I carefully read a lot of the state orders and this whether for distancing or mask requirements as well as CDC guidelines and recommendations. And I agree, we want to encourage people that more distance and distance plus mask is better. But in terms of what the absolute minimum is, it's often helpful to go with the same recommendations that people have been hearing. And that's the six feet is what has been typically recommended through multiple avenues. And that's also the reason that we included the age 10. It's children under the age of 10 is because that is what is in the, for counties who have reached the red level and there is a countywide mask ordinance or mask requirement, then those orders are for children under the age of 10 to be exempt. And so hoping that we never reach red, but understanding that that is a possibility, I feel that having consistency with what we have for the rules in the city and what would be in place outside our city limits to the best extent, and again, consistency with what people have been hearing, it just makes it a little less daunting and intimidating for people to understand what the rules are, what's expected of them.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. Shawna Sundberg is somebody who has asked several questions and she said her computer was about ready to die. She wanted to, I think, Scott, I'm not sure if she lined up in the queue to speak. I just wanted to give her an opportunity. We can also check later, check on the record to see what the other questions are and whether we've been answered them. We had, we did have several other people that raised their hand. Looks like Virginia, if you could give us your full name and your address and you'll have three minutes to speak. Virginia, did you want to speak? You need to unmute your microphone. Okay, I think we'll need to probably go to somebody else. Is there anybody else lined up in the queue right now?
President Isley, that's all we have in the queue.
Thank you. Okay, so that's it for the queue. Are there any other comments from council members? As we said, we'll be posting the draft. Thank you, Councilmember Grace, for reading through that. We'll post a draft on the city website so that people can be looking at it. And we welcomed everybody's comments and the discussion tonight and everybody's efforts towards helping get this draft document ready. We really appreciate this. So without any other comments then, thanks for your time and we'll see you at 7:00 PM on Monday night then for the reading of the ordinance.
And hopefully we can get it approved and make our community much safer.
Yes, thank you. Oh, Member Patterson, Mayor Patterson.
President Isley, do we have a time for Monday night for those?
7:00 PM, 7:00 PM, Monday night.
7:00 PM, thank you.
And Councilmember Smedley, did you have a question? Oh, okay.
No, I was just waving. I thought we were ready to roll.
Okay, I think we are. Thanks so much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.